It said that we were live on air.
Uh huh.
Now call this meeting of Jacksonville City Council with an order. I want to welcome this huge crowd we have in here tonight for coming out and also those who'll be watching the broadcast on G10 TV and it's got a room full tonight, room full of folks, fine folks. But what we're going to do to start out with, I'm gonna have everyone rise in just a moment. We're going to, first, we're going to observe a moment of silence and I would like to ask that we observe this moment of silence to honor the innocent victims of the senseless terrorist attacks that occurred over the weekend in Paris. We'll just take a moment to keep them victims, including those still fighting for their lives and their families, close at heart. So we'll follow that by our pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation. Please rise and join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as always, we pause to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this beautiful day, to give you thanks for the blessings and benefits that you bestow upon us each individually and upon us as the city of Jacksonville. Our hearts are heavy and our prayers and thoughts over the people of France and this terrorist attack that affected them on Friday. We pray for them and all those persons who have been so affected by war, by violence, and live in danger and agony every day, not knowing what the next may bring their way. We pray for peace, your peace, that all mankind would learn to live together in harmony and peace. We pray for and give thanks for all of our veterans and especially those who will be recognized this evening. We pray for those who are on active duty and are serving us, some of them in dangerous places this very evening. We pray for their safety, for their anxious families. And as always, we pray for our mayor and our council, that your guidance and direction would be with them. All this we ask in your holy name, amen.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. You have a copy of it at each of your places.
Move approval.
Any discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are very honored tonight by the presence of many of our veterans and on behalf of the council and myself, I want to welcome into City Hall and to this meeting, veterans that protected our country and our freedom. They have willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberties of others. Following their military service, our veterans continue to serve each other and the community. The city is proud of our bond with our veterans and with the local council of veterans organizations. This year is our 27th annual Veterans Recognition Ceremony. Since 1988, the city has asked each veteran group to nominate a veteran from their organization who has demonstrated outstanding volunteerism, support, and leadership during the past year for recognition as their Outstanding Veteran of the Year. At this time, the city would like to show our respect and gratitude to our local veterans by presenting the Annual Veterans Awards along with an outstanding citizen lapel pin. Council will be joining me down front in just a moment to help congratulate each of our outstanding veterans for 2015 and I'll ask Dr. Woodruff if you would please announce the names and accomplishments of each of our honorees tonight. Council, if you'll join me up front.
As the mayor and council come down, I think many of you joined me in a wonderful Veterans Day parade. The members of Rolling Thunder who are here, would you please rise and be recognized? Please, Paul. Well done. This evening, we're going to begin with NAVVets Post 225, Recognizing Joseph Trauma. Mr. Trauma, step forward and be recognized. As Joe comes forward, he has been the post motivator for the last 14 years. He has been the operational DVD program chairperson. He's the only person in the area old enough to remember what a DVD is. He's traveled over 900 miles to collect over 3,000 new and used DVDs and some CDs and they've been shared with troops overseas. He gives to the veterans and their families all over the state. He volunteers his own time to pick up and deliver medical equipment donated for use by veterans and repairs them and pays any storage fees applicable. During his service, he has driven over 150,000 miles assisting veterans and donating thousands of hours of his time. Please join me in recognizing NAVVets Post 225, Joseph Trauma. Beirut Memorial, Chapter 642, Military Order of the Purple Heart, John Cooney. Mr. Cooney, please come forward and be recognized. John has been the adjutant for, I'm sorry, the adjutant for over 10 years. He is described as the heart and corporate knowledge of the chapter. He maintains a database of over 700 members. He organizes and coordinates the chapter events. He is also the editor and publisher of the chapter bi-monthly newsletter, a constant source of ideas to further the mission of supporting the nation's combat wounded and promoting the purposes of what the Purple Heart is and what is required for our service members to earn it. Please join me in recognizing John Cooney. Disabled American Veterans, Onslow County, Chapter 16, Commander John Bryant, Jr. John is a Desert Shield and Desert Storm Combat Veteran with over 20 years of active service in the Marine Corps. Served in various positions within DAV to include the commander, senior vice commander, junior vice commander, executive committee member. While commander of Chapter 16, he led in reaching and achieving goals for membership and community service. It is now the second largest chapter in the state of North Carolina with over 2,500 members. Please join me in honoring John Bryant. I should also note, John, stop right there just a second, I forgot to turn the page, so I apologize. Out of 61 candidates, he was chosen as the Commander of the Year by the Department of the North Carolina Division, DAV. Congratulations. Disabled American Veterans Auxiliary, Onslow County, Chapter 16, Becky Corbin. Becky serves as the DAV Auxiliary Chaplain as well as the Chairman of the DAV Auxiliary Scholarship Fund. This fund grants scholarships to children and grandchildren of local active-duty military, retirees, and veterans throughout Onslow County. She organizes the weekly DAV Auxiliary Craft Day where she makes lap robes, quilts, and wheelchair bags for the ill and injured veterans. She is always willing to dedicate herself to help others. Please recognize Becky Corbin. Division of Workforce Solutions, Veterans Unit, Gail Horn. Gail is not with us, Gail is with us. Okay, I apologize. Gail is with us. Stepping in for Gail tonight is Gail Horn. Okay. Gail works tirelessly for local veterans and their families. In the past year, she has assisted homeless veterans with basic needs and stabilization in order to obtain and maintain suitable employment. She's conducted 14 workshops relative to employment. She is responsible for the direct hiring this year of 14 veterans, most of whom had disabilities. She's facilitated 10 Department of Labor Veteran Service briefings where over 600 personnel attended. Gail coordinated a foreclosure workshop for 43 attendees. She was selected as the 2014 American Legion Local Veterans Employment Representative of the Year and she was runner-up for the national recognition. Please join me in recognizing Gail. Fleet Reserve Association Branch 208, Paul Cyverson. Paul. As a retired Marine Sergeant Major, shipmate Paul Cyverson currently serves on the Board of Directors of the Branch. He's extremely dedicated to his shipmates. He never hesitates to step up and assume any given task. He is a member of the Non-Commissioned Officers Association, the Veterans of Foreign War, Marine Corps League, and Disabled American Veterans. He is actively involved in planning for the MAC McKinney Award Ceremony, has served at the Masters Ceremony since 2001. He sets the highest examples for his shipmates. Please recognize Paul. Loyal Escorts of the Green Garter, Women Marines Association of NC-1, Tarheel Chapter. This award is for Elizabeth Horn. This award will be accepted this evening by Gail Horn. Elizabeth has been actively volunteering with a number of organizations in Onslow County, including the USO, the Women's Marine Association, the Vietnam Veterans, and the Veterans of Foreign War. She utilizes her photography talents to photograph a number of events. She's also designed and created invitations, flyers, t-shirts, and decals for various associations. Please join me in recognizing Elizabeth. Marine Corps League, George Boros. Now George told me not to say boros, he said it's boros as B-O. Now George, that's almost like changing Lejeune to Lejeune. George has served as the city's Veterans Liaison in the past. Forty-seven years a member of the Marine Corps League. He is very well-versed in city, county, and state government issues. We commend him for all he does. Please join me in honoring George. Military Order of the Cootie, VFW Post 9133, Joe Cousy, U.S. Army Retired. Joe. As a member of longstanding, Joe not only takes charge of monthly cookie calls, which are hospital visits, he makes it a point to visit the elderly and shut-ins while performing their yard work and making house calls and household repairs. He serves in many capacities, including upkeep of the post home, participating in all fundraisers. Never ask unless you want it to be done. Joe will see that it is accomplished. Please join me in honoring Joe. Military Order of the Cootie, VFW Post 9133, Ladies Auxiliary, Linda Snyder. Last year, Linda was welcomed into the VFW Honor Degree, having distinguished herself as a can-do volunteer for the post auxiliary. No matter what the reason, no matter what the season, Linda has always been one of the first to step up, whether it's baking sweet treats for monthly cookie calls to disabled veterans or acting as a clown at the hospital visits. Please join me in recognizing her for her service. Military Order of the Devil Dog, 143, Julianne Franzic Williams. She is a pedigree devil dog. If you look at her feet, you will see what I mean. She is currently the pound keeper and has been so for the past three years. She directs and officiates the Beirut Ceremony at the Memorial Circle at Camp Geiger each year. The Military Order of the Devil Dog is the Fun and Honor Society of the Marine Corps League. Please join me in honoring her for her service. Military Retiree Council, Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, William Michael Joseph. The Wolfman is following the pedigree devil dog, I suppose. Joe is the Director of the Joseph Randy Reichler Joint Reception Center. He is a retired Chief Warrant Officer from the Marine Corps, has been the Secretary for the Military Retiree Council for the last four years, has handled all correspondence, clerical work, writings, dissemination of meeting minutes, et cetera. His professionalism and attention to detail is crucial for the effectiveness of the organization. He is a real go-getter. Please join me in honoring William. Monford Point Marine Association, CL Chapter 10, Ladies Auxiliary, Gwendolyn Maddox. Gwendolyn. Gwendolyn has held several positions with the Ladies Auxiliary, including being the current Vice President, the past Sergeant-at-Arms, the Chairperson of the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Black and White Scholarship Ball. She has spearheaded food sales at Riverwalk Palooza Festival and many other fundraisers. She is a foster parent, is a member of other various community organizations. Please join me in honoring Gwendolyn. NAVVets Chapter 0069, Commander Ronald R. Dixon. The Commander is a retired First Sergeant with the United States Marine Corps who served 28 years. Possesses a deep compassion to assist disabled veterans and their families. Completed over 40 hours of training to be a volunteer veteran service officer, has assisted numerous widows and widowers with death benefits, counseled veterans on various issues. He is part of the empowerment ministry at his church to recruit and train youth to become NAVVets Color Guard members. One of his most notable contributions was his assistance in the construction of the First Carolina Rivers Memorial Wall. Please join me in honoring the Commander. NAVVets Marine Chapter 0054, Paul McLaren. Paul. Paul is retired from the United States Marine Corps. He retired as a Master Gunnery Sergeant after more than 20 years of service. He joined his chapter in 2012. Shortly thereafter, he was appointed as Operational Officer for the chapter. He organized one of the largest events in the chapter's history and again tonight, we recognize him and ask you to join in honoring him. NAVVets Military Women's Chapter 008. Now, don't let me throw you off here when I say her name is Charlie Pichon. Charlie? Charlie retired from the United States Marine Corps with over 20 years of service. She is currently the historian and Secretary of the chapter, a hard worker who is dedicated, loyal, always thinking of new ways to work on the organization's mission. She is a vital link to bridging the gap to veterans and the community. Please join me in honoring Charlie. Non-Commissioned Officers Association, Down East Chapter 906, Wayne W. Morris. Now Wayne told me he actually has two loves in his life. The first is his beautiful wife who's sitting here on the front row. His second is a red Corvette. Any of you who would like to see his wife, see him immediately. Any of you who would like to see his red Corvette, come out to the drag strip out on 258. He has served on the Beirut Memorial Advisory Committee. He's been a member of the NCOA since 2013 where he has worked extensively networking and creating contacts on behalf of veterans. He was selected as the Sergeant Major MAC McKinney Award in 2014. He works tirelessly to promote the mission of veterans and serving them. Please join me in recognizing Wayne. Non-Commissioned Officers Association of the United States of America, Crystal Coast Auxiliary 275, Mary Alice Gomez Richler. She is a life member. She has served many community organizations, including the DAV, the Board of Onslow Caregivers, Military Widows, Gold Star Wives of America. She volunteers annually for the Festival of Trees held at the American Legion. She's been a guest speaker at the McKinney Event. Please join me in honoring Mary Alice. Onslow County Council of Veterans Organization, Gail Horn. Accepting is Gail Horn. Gail is a retired Master Gunnery Sergeant from the United States Marine Corps. She continues to serve her country and her community as a Disabled Veterans Outreach Specialist, the secretary, as well as members of the Women's Marine Association, the Veteran Service Officer for the VFW, the DVA Military Retirees Council. As a Disabled Veterans Outreach Specialist, she works with veterans assisting them in gaining employment. Again, let's recognize Gail for what she does. Rolling Thunder Incorporated, Chapter NC-5, Tony Maltese. I expected all the Rolling Thunder folks to suddenly stand up, so guys, stand up while your person's being recognized. Okay, Tony is a retired Marine and disabled veteran, currently serving as a member of the Chapter Board of Directors, which is an elected position. He is the epitome of a volunteer. He works to educate the public regarding POW/MIA issues. His efforts are tireless. He is highly regarded and respected by the chapter. Please join me in recognizing Tony. Tony, you can, there you go. Look back there, you can see all the, there you go. There they are. Congratulations to you. Swansboro Detachment, Marine Corps League 1407, Timothy B. Manchester. Timothy has a pivotal role in the installation of the Swansboro Detachment. He has organized, recruited, and found a location to hold their meetings, all while on active duty. He has created multiple fundraisers, maintains the Facebook page, detachment website, photo of all events, and the newsletter. As the Commandant of the Swansboro Marine Corps League, he also finds time to help veterans, active-duty Marines, and the community. Please join me in honoring Timothy. The American Legion Burton Cowell Post 265 Incorporated, Donna Ditson. Donna. Donna is a retired Master Sergeant from the United States Marine Corps with 23 years of service. She is a five-year member of Post 265, currently the historian. She helps support many events such as Thursday Night Bingo, Volunteer Benefit Activity Center, Christmas Cheer, Onslow County Fair, Veterans Day Parade. She is also the post photographer and maintains the post website. Join me in recognizing Donna. The American Legion Burton Cowell Auxiliary Unit, Post 265 Incorporated, Catherine Marino. Catherine. Catherine is an active member and vital part of the organization, which she joined in 2009. She's always willing to sell raffle tickets, make cakes, make sandwiches for bingo night. The winner of the first bingo game gets the largest sandwich, according to this. This fundraising project helps the unit to assist veterans in the community. In May, they hand out poppies to remember the veterans. She also helps with Christmas Cheer and the Pearl Harbor Remembrance. Please join me in honoring Catherine. The Captain John C. Carr Veterans Resource Center, Samuel Gumpton. Samuel is a member of the organization and has been so for the last 15 years. He leads the outreach program, the mentoring program for the young people. He also serves as the Junior ROTC Chairman. He works with 11 local high schools. He is a born leader, not afraid of hard work or new challenges. Please join me in recognizing Samuel. Veterans of Foreign War, Post 9133, Dan Grace. Dan has served nine years in the United States Marine Corps. He joined the Veterans of Foreign War in 2004. Presently, he is the post adjutant and House Committee Chairman. His dedication, hard work, commitment to the post have made him extremely valuable and an exemplary post member. He spends many hours volunteering on numerous events, performing any necessary repairs to the facility and equipment therein. He also works aboard Camp Lejeune with the Focus Program that provides resiliency training for active-duty military service members and their families. He's committed to the veteran, committed to the mission. He is well-respected. Please join me in honoring Dan. Veteran, I'm sorry, Vietnam Veterans of America, John Panarisi, Chapter 654, John Matson. Mr. Matson served 30 years in the United States Marine Corps. He served in Vietnam in '67 and '68 with the 1st Battalion. He's a member of the Chapter Board of Directors, represents the chapter at the Onslow County Council of Veterans Organizations. For the last four years, he's prepared and organized the annual Veterans Day Ceremony in conjunction with Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune staff. A member of the North Carolina Committee for the Support of the Guard and Reserve, he provides benefits and assistance in helping military personnel receive their rights. Over 2,300 personnel were briefed last year. He attends job fairs, is also a member of the Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune Retiree Council. Please join me in honoring Mr. Matson. Women Marines Association, Tarheel Chapter, NC-1, Janine Franz. Janine. Ms. Franz is an active-duty United States Marine Corps Master Sergeant that repeatedly goes above and beyond to serve active-duty and veteran members. She's a life member of the Women's Marine Association since 2007, serving as the chapter president of the Iraq Lioness Chapter in '07-'08 and is a charter member of the Women's Marine Association. president of the Iraq Lioness Chapter in '07-'08, and is a charter member of the Women of War Chapter. This past year, she created a historical PowerPoint presentation to enhance the ceremony. She is also active member of the VFW post. She epitomizes what is meant by willing to serve. Please join me in honoring her. Wounded Warrior Battalion East, Dallas C. Poole Senior. Dallas is a retired Master Sergeant from the United States Marine Corps, serving 26 years of service. Currently serves as the Veteran and Charitable Organization Coordinator for the Wounded Warrior Battalion East. He joined in 2013, immediately became a tremendous asset, and willing to do anything to support the wounded warrior and their family. Expert on ethics determinations, standards of conduct, official relationships with federal and non-federal activities. He is the sole point of contact between the battalion and over 150 veteran services and charitable organizations. He's coordinated the first-ever Veterans and Charitable Organization Symposium, which was conducted 23 January 2015. He is exceptionally valuable to the mission of his organization. Please join me in honoring Dallas. The last person we'd like to recognize is actually the city's appointed Veterans Liaison. This time, I'd like to call forward Luis Aliers de Jesus. As a liaison, he is responsible for ensuring that the city of Jacksonville is aware of what is happening in the veterans' community, and also keeping our veterans' group apprised of what's going on with the city. The city of Jacksonville values his steadfast and long support to the city and to the veteran. Please join me in recognizing our liaison. At this time, I would like to ask every person who has been recognized to please stand in unison. Those people who've been recognized tonight, please stand. On behalf of a grateful nation, we thank you for your service. On behalf of a grateful city of Jacksonville, we thank you. On behalf of the city of Jacksonville, the mayor and council, and the 550 employees, we pledge to you that we will always honor you, we will provide you with service, and we will remember that you are America's 911 service. Thank you for what you do.
I know that this kind of moved a little quick. If anybody wanted to get additional photographs, we're going to take a little break right now. Some of you I know came for this ceremony only. We'll give you opportunity to leave, but we'll stick around up here for a few minutes in case you want to get some additional photographs. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm pretty boring.
Title issues as well as things too.
Ray?
Okay.
Better turn on the machine.
Hot in here.
Protesting working conditions.
I assume we're, uh...
Yeah, it's warm.
Good. Okay. All right, back in session. All right. Next item we have is the first section of public comment for this evening. I have no one signed up for public comment, and I know that sometimes the list gets taken up before everybody comes in. Is there anyone present wishes to speak at public comment? Seeing no one, we'll go on to the adoption of the minutes and the consent items.
Move approval.
And these minutes are for the November 4 special.
As presented.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Next item we have, we'll go down to number six, and this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute installment purchase agreements. There is a required public hearing in this matter, and at this time I'll recess the regular council meeting and open up public hearing. Is there anyone present wishes to speak to this matter? Hearing no one, close the public hearing. Counselor, you're being asked to... To approve the resolution.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why is the public hearing required?
The public hearing is required when you're financing property. The other matter that's just up here was just financing personal property, I'm sorry, public hearing real property. So that's the distinction between the two agenda items. That help?
That answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? Hearing, was there a motion already? Okay. Could you...
I'll offer. Excuse me. I'll recommend we accept or approve the resolution approving the proposal from First Bank for the financing of the real property at Old Town Marina.
Second. Double motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have item number seven is a street closing. This is a 37 acre portion of the right-of-way of the old Huff Drive, that's that area up there by Chick-fil-A. And this had to do with the real line in the street. Mr. Carter will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. A short presentation, let's see if the council has questions. I did want to point out one thing, that this is different than what you've done in the past. Of course, you passed on October 20th a resolution of intent to close this portion. It is the portion here, it is that is proposed to be closed, is the hatched proportion or property there, excuse me. Glenn's now circling it in red. As you can see, this is the old roadbed for Huff Drive, and then when the new Huff Drive was put in, this section here in the hatch marks, if you will, is the old roadbed, and we're asking you to abandon and to close. The normal situation, we call for half of it to go to the adjoining property owner, and the other half come to the Chick-fil-A, which is on the other side. The statute does allow for all of it to go to the Chick-fil-A side, and your staff is proposing that it all go to the Chick-fil-A side, which Glenn's now putting an error there because of the fact that, again, there's no use for the city to develop it on the other side. I've been working with the Chick-fil-A attorneys out of Atlanta, Georgia. They are very much interested in for it to be abandoned, and they hope, not necessarily tomorrow or in the near future, but they're hoping at one point in time, they believe there's enough property there, if it is abandoned, that it could be combined with their property, their structure torn down, instead of just having a drive-through facility, you could have another sit-down restaurant, which would, again, add to the tax base of the city. Now, that's not any kind of promise or anything, but again, that's one, they are at least, they're very interested in obtaining this and have worked diligently. They've paid the expense of, when you do the whole property, you're just one side, you have to have a plat recorded and so forth. They've carried all that expense and have worked in that regard. All we've done is, of course, the resolution that's in the package here and the quitclaim deed, which I prepared for the property to go from the city to the Chick-fil-A Corporation if the council approves this. But is there any questions on behalf of counsel or the mayor?
Question. Who is it going to?
It's going to the Chick-fil-A ownership, the Chick-fil-A Corporation over here, where the two, the drive-through is, has two drive-throughs on each side or a drive-through on each side.
The corporation in Atlanta, is that who owns it?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Oh, okay.
I do not believe that my, and we have dealt with Mr. Burgess, who you know owns the franchises here, but he does not own the property. We actually had a meeting, a sit-down meeting with him, and he, of course, is very excited about this, too. And he owns this franchise, but the property itself is in the Chick-fil-A Corporation name. If you were to abandon it, it would go to them.
Why doesn't it go up for general sale?
Because it's just being abandoned. And again, this property standing alone, we do not believe would be marketable because it could not be developed under the standards and so forth. So the real benefit is to get it back on the tax rolls, and again, number one, let somebody else mow the grass, number two, and number three, again, hopefully one day the Chick-fil-A Corporation or some successor would be able to fully develop that and make it even a more prime commercial property.
So just for the viewer's knowledge, the piece in itself is, nothing can be done with it. If an individual were to purchase it, there's nothing that can be developed.
Could not be developed because of the size of it. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It does require public hearing.
Any other questions of Mr. Carter? Okay. We're going to recess the regular council meeting and open up a required public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone present wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Counselor, you're being asked to approve the resolution for the street closing order.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of this street closing order.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to agenda item number eight, and this is the auditor's report on the City of Jacksonville's comprehensive annual financial report for FY 2015. Our finance director, Gail Majes, is present. Are you going to present this item tonight? You're going to have the auditor. Okay.
My name's Andrew Brothers, I'm with Galadri. And I first want to thank the council for letting us be a service to City of Jacksonville again this year. Also, I'd like to thank management of Jacksonville and all the city departments, specifically finance, for assisting us during the audit this year. We're going to dive right into the CAFER. Right here, I think you guys might have it on your iPad. If you would go to page 12. And page 12 is our audit opinion. Jacksonville received what we call an unmodified, clean opinion. It's the best opinion possible. Everything checked out. One thing I do want to point out, on the second page, page 13 of the opinion, the emphasis of a matter. During the year, new accounting standard was implemented, referred to as GASB, or Governmental Accounting Standards Board, statement number 68, accounting and financial reporting for pensions. This basically calls a restatement of the net position to reflect the beginning net pension liability. That is also referred to more detailed within the notes of the financial statements. Next, if you'll go to page 15, this is the management's discussion and analysis, presents the financial highlights for the year, as well as what went on during the year with assets, liabilities, revenues, expenses, capital assets, and debt. Next, if you'll go to page 36. This is your balance sheet. I want to point out, if you looked at the first column of numbers, that's your general fund, and I want to point out your unassigned general fund balance is approximately 10.7 million, which represents approximately 27 percent of the current year general fund expenditures. General fund expenditures can be found on page 38. If you flip over, you'll see general fund expenditures approximately $38.9 million. Then if you'll go to page 40 of the report, this is your general fund budget to actual. As you can see, the original budget and the final budget didn't change much from the beginning year to the end of year. Also, as you can see, budgeted revenues over expenditures were approximately 961,000, excuse me, revenues under expenditures, 961,000, and the actual was actually revenues over expenditures of approximately 4.2 million. So through management's effective monitoring of expenditures during the year, Jacksonville was able to see that, that revenues came out a lot higher than expenditures than budgeted. Also, once factoring in the other financing sources, that resulted in excess of revenues of still at excess of 2.8 million. Next, if you'll go to page 47. These are your notes to the financial statements. Provides more detail and disclosures related to the assets, liabilities, as well as what I referred to earlier, the GASB 68 implementation of the new accounting standard. Next, if you'll flip to the back, page 288. This is the compliance section of the report. And page 288 through... Page 288 through 293, these are our opinions we issued, also unmodified, clean opinions that we issued on the city's compliance with laws, regulations, and grant agreements related to the federal and state awards Jacksonville received during fiscal year 15. So all those were clean, clean opinion, best possible opinion you can receive. Next, I want to shift on over to the SAS 114 letter. And this is what we like to refer to as the audit report card, basically how the audit details how the audit went this year. This is actually in this pamphlet over here. This is also our communication with the city council, and it states, basically gives a summary of certain matters required by professional standards that we present to you guys at the end of the audit. Report card. Couple of things I just want to mention in here are, there were no disagreements encountered during the audit with management. There were no significant issues or findings with management. It was, like I said, clean, clean audit, clean opinion. That's all I've got. Any questions from the city council or the mayor?
Dr. Woodruff?
I have one question, it's the same question we ask every year. You are hired by the mayor and council, you're not hired by the staff. In preparing this audit, did any member of the staff, whether it's the management or any city employee, try to influence you in any way to report this audit the way you have found it?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Mayor, as we close this item out, I would like the public to be informed that Gail Majes, our finance director, and her staff, they do an outstanding job of preparing the budget. The budget is only one portion, though, of the financial affairs of the city. It is how you account for the funds that the mayor and council deliver to us in a budget that is essential. It is, while the budget document sets what we can spend, it is the finance management that supervises how it is spent every day, to make sure that we comply with all of the purchasing requirements, to make sure that we comply with all of the reporting requirements. I'd like to publicly commend Gail for her leadership to her department and to the city. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Gail Andrew, presenting the report.
Counsel, the action needed here is to consider accepting the auditor's report. If there aren't any other questions.
I'll make the motion to accept the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2015 as presented.
Second. Double motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would like at some later time, perhaps, to have a budget workshop overview, review of the financials for 15.
We'd be very happy to do that, and we know between now and the time that is set up that you will have enjoyable evening reading, and that you will read all 289 pages of the CAFER. So we'll be happy to set that up.
I'm not making that a requirement of the budget.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the reports for the night. I'll start with Mr. Ward.
Proud to be here, sir.
Proud to have you here, sir. Mr. Thomas.
I'll just take this opportunity to say Happy Thanksgiving, everybody have it safe, and Happy Thanksgiving next week.
Thank you.
Just like to commend our veterans for their service and dedication to the City of Jacksonville, as well as to our country, and congratulations to Mayor Phillips and Mayor Protem on your winning of your reelection.
And do you likewise?
Mr. Willingham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had a chance to attend the National League of Cities Conference, and as far as the resolutions that were voted upon, Dr. Woodruff gave a presentation on the Cadillac provision of the Affordable Care Act, and the league took a position, and they will be lobbying in March, the Congress, to repeal that Cadillac provision. So, nothing further.
Mayor Protem Lozaro.
Thank you, Mayor Phillips. I had the honor and privilege of attending the Metro Mayor's Coalition meeting with Mr. Massey on your behalf, sir, and it was a very good meeting hosted in Carboro and Chapel Hill. It was very pleasant. We had some legislative award ceremony at a luncheon. We also heard from some of the representatives that were there from the House, sort of had a recap discussion on the session that just closed, and they gave us a little insight on the upcoming session, that potentially some things may arise back up. It was a very good meeting. We had a very nice dinner, and we had some strategic discussions. Some of the concerns were relationships and working relationships with other partners such as, you know, the League of Municipalities, and some strategic planning work in terms of the size and the makeup of the organization and its future.
Sorry, I missed that.
I'll say that again. The makeup of the executive board. And anyways, it was a really good meeting, and honored to have been there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The only thing I have tonight, I want to congratulate my two compadres here on a well thought-out election, a very clean campaign. Now, I'm glad to have our team still intact. I think we're doing a lot of good things for Jacksonville, and keeping the team intact is very important. So, congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Want to remind everybody that Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. on Western Boulevard, starting at College and going all the way to Branmore Shopping Center, is the 60th Annual Holiday Parade slash Christmas Parade, that's sponsored by the also Jacksonville Chamber of Commerce. So invite everybody to come on out and see a beautiful parade. If it's anything like the Veterans Parade, especially with the pageantry and all and the weather, then it's going to be a wonderful time. But that's all I have. And Dr. Woodruff?
Steve. Several things. First of all, Mayor, thank you for reminding the public about the Christmas Parade this Saturday. Also, Thursday night of this week, as the mayor and council heard in workshop, city staff will be hosting a meeting for the Bay Shore homeowners who live basically across the street from City Hall. That neighborhood, we're trying to establish some good relationships and get input on things that they would like to see improved in their neighborhood. That begins at 6:00 p.m. in the youth center here directly across from City Hall. That's this Thursday night. This week, we run a full schedule for garbage, recycling, and horticultural. Next week, would you mind the public that, believe it or not, it's already Thanksgiving? So we will be picking up garbage on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We will not be providing service Thursday or Friday. So if your schedule is normally Monday, you will get it. Ron, I don't know is Tuesday regular Tuesday, and Wednesday is going to be Thursday and Friday?
Yes.
So let's review that. Monday, if your normal day is Monday, it'll be picked up Monday. If your normal day is Tuesday, it'll be picked up Tuesday. If your normal day is Thursday, it will be picked up on Wednesday. If your normal day is Friday, it will be picked up on Wednesday. Okay. The other thing that we would like to mention is that on December the 1st at 5:00 p.m. here in Council Chamber, we will have the swearing-in ceremony for the three elected council members, the mayor, Mr. Lozaro, Ms. Washington. Public is invited to this event at 5:00 o'clock. There will be a reception shortly thereafter. We hope the public will attend. Mayor and council, thank you for the leadership you provide. It's an honor to serve with you. Yes, sir, that is when you get your bonuses. And I believe the bonus is the same as last year.
The same as you got last year? Oh, great. All right, with that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Some move? All in favor signify by saying aye.